...and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrative-page-house-access-virtual-meets. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen, the jetman, or watch the meeting either online by the town's on-demand video broadcast on TBC Television on Channel 101, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428 towns for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance as members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in no time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite this effort, we will post audio news or video recordings, transcripts, or other content submitted of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, can we proceed for the President of the Meeting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all. Thank you. Okay, on our agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, moments of silence, presentations, senior center study results, department reports, police departments, building departments, county administrators. We have several action items, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Sturbridge as a full-time police officer, consideration and possible action on the National Cultural Commission grant application, consideration and possible action on a 2021 doc permit to the rent of the estate at 76 St. Sure Drive, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Stedden-Bowley as a heavy equipment operator in the department's public work, consideration and possible action on appraisal services for a existing project, consideration and possible acceptance for the deuce of $50 for the Sturbridge Fire Department from Robin and Lynn Bond of 425 Trail Road. All businesses, we have COVID-19 updates. On the new businesses, we have compensation, compensation study, respondents for local tenants, citizens' phone, and then we will adjourn. Can we, any public service announcements here? No, not today. Can we, Mike?
No, no service announcement. Thank you.
Can we, Chase?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none. And you, oh, okay. Hold on one second, okay, yes. And Ian, our Board of Selectmen are unable to attend the meeting. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. The Town of Sturbridge is now accepting applications for the Town of Sturbridge Tax Assistance for Low-Income Seniors and Disabled Citizens Program. If you would like assistance in paying your real estate tax bill and you are 65 years or older, or have a state-recognized disability and your total gross household income does not exceed $26,732 if single, or $32,272 if married, or if others reside in the household, you may be eligible. All taxes and fees due to the town must be current. Applications can be found online at www.sturbridge.gov, or you can call the Finance Department at 508-347-2509. The deadline to file an application is February 15, 2021, and this notice will be posted on our website and published. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a moment of silence for all those affected by COVID. Okay, thank you.
Mary?
Okay, next on the...
Mary? Ian asked to recognize someone in the moment of silence.
If I explain to him what our policy is by his depth, he understands perfectly well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we have the presentation and the senior center study results. Jeff, you want to take the lead?
Yes, thank you. Roughly six, seven, eight, nine months ago, the town engaged BHNA to undertake a study of three potential sites for a senior center. One is to reuse the existing site, and then there's two other alternative sites that were considered and seeing what would be feasible and what it would cost to construct a turnkey operation on each location. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Robin to give some additional background, then turn it over to the consultant to go through the presentation.
Okay, hi, Robin. Hi, everyone. How are you this evening? Jeff, can you share your screen, please, or allow me to use mine?
I got you. Hold on. You're the presenter?
Yep.
There you go.
Is that working for everyone?
Yep.
Welcome. So actually about a year ago, at town meeting, the town appropriated funds to hire BHNA for the feasibility study. Tonight in attendance, we have myself as the facilities coordinator, Leslie Wong, the Council on Aging Director, who was assisting the Senior Center Study Committee members, of which several are on tonight with us, Ken White, who's been here from the beginning, and Rebecca Mee-Mell, who's also here. I think Hugh Brandall has also joined us virtually. We also have some of the design team members from BHNA, Joel Bargman, Reece Schroeder, Rachel Young, and PAR civil engineering is Lance Hill, and I think Chris Weber is also on tonight. Just a moment of remembering here for how we got here. In 2015, the Council on Aging formed the Senior Center Study Committee, and at that time, they completed the needs analysis with community feedback. 2017, that was completed, and it was determined that there was a shortfall of square footage in the historic building that the senior center is currently in at 480 Main Street. Then we hired BHNA to study three sites of Jeff mentioned. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to BHNA first.
Thank you. My name's Joel Bargman. Just in opening, I really appreciate on behalf of our firm and our consultancy opportunity to work with the town on the project. And I just wanted to mention, Robin mentioned when the project started, we were in the peak of the first wave of the pandemic shutdown, and really appreciate the options that Robin and her team afforded us to get into the building, get onto the sites, and allow us to keep this project going even though there was a shutdown and offices were closed, and you all know what transpired. I also appreciate the flexibility. We had some engineers and architects that had to conform to different COVID protocols and made a few adjustments to get the project done on schedule, and I appreciate being allowed to do that. Robin mentioned in 2017, you came up with a program. Our first job was to reevaluate and confirm that program moving forward with what might have changed in the past three years. The first step of doing that is to look at your program and realize that the five components that your Council on Aging has suggested for the new senior center is based on providing lifelong learning in the arts, providing wellness activities, and I think you'll see that these are well-served in the program. It's a very healthy program in that regard, and I'm very impressed. The third aspect is just the dissemination of information is incredibly important. Insurance, social security, health care, wills, taxes, all sorts of information comes through COA. The excessive of COA depends on the volunteers, so that's the fourth component we have to design in. Easy to use, Rachel will sort of show how that's done in kitchens and how we make the facility accessible to the volunteers. And I think the most difficult thing for us as architects is to create a friendly center that encourages socialization without it being contrived, because that's one of the major problems that we're seeing in communities as the communities age, is the lack of ability for folks to get out into the community and socialize. I won't go through this in detail, but we did what's called a program where we give a square footage to each room. I think the best way to explain how the 12,600 square feet of your space is used is to let Rachel paint a picture, showing pictures from other centers of the main spaces in the room. And then when we get to the plans, I think you'll have a visual image of what's in this building. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rachel to describe what's in the building. Next.
Thank you, Joel. So I'm going to talk just briefly about how the square footage is, the numbers that you have in the program, really translate into actual physical spaces. And so I'm going to start with the multipurpose room, which is really the heart of a senior center. And what I have here is an example from a senior center on Martha's Vineyard, which the multipurpose room is really doing a lot of heavy lifting. In other words, it is being used for eating food programs, for athletic programs, you name it. And the downside of that and the upside of it, first of all, is that you're able to really use space efficiently. But the downside is it really puts a lot of burden on the staff. They are charged with breaking down and setting up facilities, almost like a custodial staff would be. And their time and efforts and energy probably could be put to better effort. That being said, we generally like to have our multipurpose rooms around 1,500 to 2,500 square feet and compartmentalized for the dividing screen that allows them to be broken up into multiple spaces that can be used at times. And if I could have the next slide, I can spend a little bit of that. So this is in fact that. This is a 2,500 square foot multipurpose room. The larger of the two spaces is 1,500 square feet, the smaller is 1,000 square feet. Typically, it has an association, a direct connection, adjacency with the kitchen. In this case, you can see it on the right. You can peek through that pass-through window and see the kitchen beyond. And typically, the smaller space is associated with that kitchen, and it's always set up as a meal space, so it can be broken down and used for something else. And then the larger space really serves for those bigger programs, events, presentations, something that you might use audiovisual equipment for. But of course, it has the capability by collapsing the applicable partition to create one large space that can be used for special events. If I could have the next slide. So the multipurpose room functions best when it has ample storage. I mean, usually, that's the downside, or multipurpose rooms that don't have adequate storage suffer. So this is an example of a kitchen that in turn became storage because they didn't have enough space for their large tables and chairs. And I will say that the amount of storage really, you'd be surprised at what gets stored in these rooms. For example, I'm just wrapping up a project now where we're storing a baby grand in their storage. So large equipment is put in these spaces. If I could have the next slide. And so I talked briefly before about the kitchens. Kitchens can come in a variety of sizes and designs. They could be commercial kitchens where they are really fitted out with what you would see in a restaurant kitchen, stainless steel fixtures, stainless steel appliances, stainless steel finishes, and they're really intended just to be used by professional staff. They could be used by volunteers, but really is intended to be used by people who are trained on the equipment, who know what they're doing, know their way around a commercial kitchen. Conversely, you could have a senior center kitchen which is intended to be a program room, a teaching kitchen in effect, and that would be a space that's more welcoming, has a more residential feel, might have residential cabinetry, finishes like granite countertops, and large center islands, a place where volunteers and patrons can congregate, so do a cooking class, or somehow otherwise come together. And so the image that we have on the right is of Falmouth Senior Center, which was recently completed, and it's what I would call a hybrid of the two type. It has some residential cabinetry to give it a softer, but it's very visible from their main lounge space. So often you have to think about what you can see, and seeing into a commercial kitchen can be a little garish because it's so institutional in appearance. So the Falmouth has a mixture. It has those residential cabinets, beautiful lighting, and then it has that center island which has a nice welcoming feel and looks like a hearth. But at the same time, it has commercial equipment. It has the commercial stove and warming oven, so it can be used for folk applications. If I could have the next slide. Other space that we like to focus on early on is the fitness spaces. And the fitness spaces, again, really depends on the preference of the user, but they can be small with a few pieces of equipment, or they can be quite large, like a small wife with, you know, up to 20 pieces of equipment. On senior center, we don't have a photo here, but that's in fact what they did. It's a very nice gym setup that they made. But in addition to those pieces of equipment, you want a space where you can do cardio, a space where you can do yoga, really a place that can be devoid of any equipment. The type of activities that would be used, that the space would be used for, really vary. I mean, it's easy to say that seniors are one population and have one need in terms of activities. And in fact, you know, a 60-year-old is different than a 70-year-old is different from an 80-year-old, and their needs and their interests and the type of physical activity that they can do and should be doing vary greatly. And so we want to design spaces that can accommodate all those different subsets of the senior population. Something again to, you know, not to be hitting on storage too much, but all of these large spaces really require large storage that goes along with them. For example, if you're using chairs for a workout program, you need a place to store them, and it's an afterthought to say that's pushed against the wall. You really want the built-in storage that can accommodate that, or audiovisual equipment that you can have a sound system that's able to be used for these programming. All of those things need storage. Next, thank you. And then oftentimes, when we're looking at programs and we're getting into what those, how those programs and the square footage again translate into spaces, we like to talk about whether we have flexible spaces or purpose-built spaces. An activity room is a good example. An activity room can be outfitted with stationary equipment like a billiard table that takes up a bit of space, or it could be set up with something that's a little more convertible, like this ping-pong table that you see here that's collapsible, but can go to the side. And so the space is a capability to be used for other activities, not just games. Conversely, you can have a space that really the character is so driven by its use, and it's really not flexible at all in that respect. And there's a place for both of them. I think that having something that really is a dedicated space to a dedicated activity, that character carries through in a way that gives the space a certain uniqueness. Those are the trade-offs that we look at when we're getting into more depth about the program and the layout of the space. Next. And so that also translates or corresponds with other spaces in the building that are more informal congregational spaces. So those would be lounges, lobbies, areas where they're, they could be pass-through spaces, but if they're made also larger, they become destinations or places where patrons can congregate. And so you could have a small lobby that's just big enough for people to check in, or you could have a lobby that's just slightly larger and can accommodate soft seating or tables and chairs, and becomes an area where patrons can have a card game on a regular basis. And that can really activate the space and turn it into a really, a really special location. At the same time, conferences are something that we often neglect. Often we say that we need a conference space for every different use, like we need a staff conference space, we need a conference space for our nurse professionals, we need a conference space for fiber conversations with families, when in fact, you can have one conference space that really does the duty of all of them. So at this point, I would like to pass the presentation on to Reeve.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, no problem.
As part of our review of existing conditions at 480 Main Street, BHA brought in allied consulting engineers for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. We brought in universal environmental consultants for hazardous materials, and Bolton and DiMartino for structural review. The building's in a reasonably good condition, but some important deficiencies. There are ADA and MAAB accessibility requirement deficiencies, some of which were identified in the 2008 accessibility audit. The main monumental stair and south entry do not comply with egress requirements. The basement use for public access is not in accordance with minimum ceiling height requirements. Finel windows are not locking, and they don't seal properly. Also, the accessible hardware was not installed. The existing brick on the exterior is going to require some repointing, and the exterior requires cleaning. Structurally, concerns include the center masonry bearing wall, which is in the basement, and the width of that wall supporting the columns above it is of some concern. Structurally, our engineer used the term "not robust" in its construction. Seismic upgrades are required, and they include crew wall anchors at the second floor, steel plates and anchors at the roof to wall connection. Some deteriorated wood framing was noted, and something that impacts the architectural design going forward, the interior east-west bearing wall must remain as it holds the east-west walls and the roof in place. Mechanically, the review found outside combustion air louvers are unprotected from snow. There are missing sensors to close those louvers to stop outside car exhaust from coming into the building and being recirculated. There was some basement equipment, fan coil units located in damp areas which are prone to mold. Plumbing noted the complete lack of janitor's closets. Currently, they use the kitchen sink, and the code requires one on every floor. The hot water piping was missing insulation, and the existing hot water heater is undersized to expand the kitchen, if, you know, towards a more commercial kitchen, and it's also young. Electrically, the need to, for complete replacement of the existing fire line system with an addressable system, they found exposed wiring, and the, some of the exit signs are either incorrect or incorrectly positioned. Fire protection, the building is not sprinkled and would need to be. Hazardous materials identified were mostly on the exterior in terms of asbestos in the caulking around the doors and the windows. There is lead paint in the building and would require removal as part of any renovation. All of these deficiencies would be addressed in renovation and addition work, and are included in the cost estimate for 480 Main Street. The existing senior center at 480 Main was evaluated for renovation addition, and 70-Cedar and 80 Haynes were evaluated for a new facility. Next slide. The three sites evaluated are shown here on this map of Sturbridge. Each site is under a different zoning district, and all three sites do allow for a senior center to be built. The existing 480 Main Street is in the commercial tourist district. 70 Cedar Street is within the suburban residential district, and 80 Haynes Street is within the historic commercial district. Next slide. All three sites were evaluated based on many criteria, including zoning, dimensional requirements, site conditions, soils, utilities, topography, abutters, FEMA floodplain, et cetera, access, traffic including entry and exit, emergency vehicle access, parking or 65-car minimums, and constructability costs. Next slide. As part of our evaluation of 480 Main Street for renovation and addition, the existing building would be brought into compliance with all building and accessibility codes. On the left of this slide, you can see all the codes that govern this project. Additionally, the building's structure would require some seismic and reinforcing upgrades. Next slide. 480 Main Street is the existing location of the senior center. The yellow in the center of the slide is the existing building. Orange indicates the addition required to meet the center's building program. To achieve the minimum 65 parking spaces required, the entire site is built out. A new traffic pattern is created by adding a new exit onto Arnold Road further away from the intersection of Arnold and Main Street. New site circulation provides for a drop-off area, and the new entrance to the building now is on the east side where that red, those are handicap spaces, and that's the entrance to the building. Due to the site topography along Main Street and up the east side and portions of Arnold Road, five-foot-high retaining walls were created along the property line in Main Street. A switchback accessibility ramp was constructed to link the site to the existing sidewalk. The site accommodates the building program, parking requirements, does not really allow for future programs such as gardening, outdoor exercise, et cetera. We have with us Lance Hill from PAR, who's our civil engineer. Lance, is there anything you want to add to this slide?
No, other than the existing site currently has 26 spaces, which is why we had to take a look at expanding the footprint of the existing parking lot to accommodate 60, we're showing 66 spaces on this layout here.
Next slide. So 80 Haynes Street is evaluated as a possible site for new construction. Haynes Street runs parallel with US Interstate 84. Traffic speeds on Haynes are higher than roads around other sites. The site is somewhat remote from the center of town, and there are several challenges with the site. Next slide. As part of our review of existing conditions, excuse me, 80 Haynes Street has several conditions that impact its suitability as a senior center location. There's a conservation deed restriction limiting development of the site. Utilities are remote, with the closest pound of water about 1,700 feet away. The sewer's over half a mile away. This site would likely require a septic system. Power is available from overhead lines along Haynes. A large area of the site is in the FEMA Zone A flood hazard area, which is depicted in green. There are riverfront and habitat boughies, which are the blue and purple lines on the right-hand side. Topographic features... Topographic features limit where a new building can be located. Building was located in this corner to work with as best we can the, the topographic entours of the site. The town of Sturbridge is in possession of the Haynes Street right-of-way, which allowed the proposed building to slide closer to Haynes, uh, to minimize the, the impact on, on site excavation. There would require 10-foot-high retaining walls at the rear and sides, which are depicted in those brown areas there as the site cuts into the hill. There are, uh, because of the length of the site along Haynes Road, there is additional frontage for future parking expansion. There are no pedestrian accommodations out here. Lance, is there anything you want to add to this site?
Uh, one thing that I will bring up here is the access out to Haynes Street. Um, you know, when people are coming in and, and out of the access way to Haynes Street here, there's a, a lot of site distance up and down the road, but there is, I think, the probability of some speeding that, that might occur on that road, so, um, it's a little bit different than the existing senior center location, whereas they have maybe less of a speeding issue when they access Main Street, but they have more of a volume issue. This is just quite the opposite potentially that would have to be incorporated into their final design.
Okay, uh, next slide. 70 Cedar Street is the senior center committee recommended site for new construction. The site is currently unbuilt and wooded. Next slide. 70 Cedar Street offers a centralized location of town with less traffic. Access is proposed through 60 Cedar Street via Cedar Pond Road, where Sturbridge has sports fields, parking, and roadways. Traffic is minimized through the adjacent neighborhood. Utilities, including power, water, and sewer are all available. There are no deed restrictions on the site. The proposed building with parking for 65 cars fits inside the 120-foot wooded buffer zone, which is the pair of dotted lines tracing the perimeter of the site. The, uh, additional parking could be shared with the adjacent athletic fields, uh, which are noted in the dark green and the gray at the bottom of the, uh, the drawing. Topographic features will require excavation and approximately 10-foot-high retaining walls as the building site cuts into the hillside. There's currently no pedestrian accommodations at the site. Uh, Lance, uh, do you want to, want to, uh, add anything to that?
Um, yeah, I think that, you know, that, that is a significant issue that we really tried to balance somewhere we're relocating the building out here, was some of the topographic challenges. Um, and we, we ended up at this particular location that we felt would kind of minimize the cut and fills on the site to the, to the maximum extent practical. Uh, we're also showing some adjacent areas that, you know, could expand parking, depending on what, any additional uses of the building might be, uh, just to the upper right of the building, and, you know, even some additional, um, amenities that could be brought into the program like gardening and the other things that Reece had been talking about.
I get the next slide? And if I can skip over this for the sake of time, um, as you can see, what we've done in the study is we've really tried to be neutral in our recommendations about sites, but study each site exactly the same and use the same criteria. So we had Lance's firm also do a traffic and parking analysis of each site. Some of the differences in, in spaces that you might hear about is, is 40 Main Street has the opportunity for some overflow parking at adjacent sites at, um, 70 Cedar Street and 80 Haynes may not have. But on the other hand, 70 Cedar Street is, was just pointed out, is a large property and has ample parking, and if the fields are constructed in the future, there, there would be great overflow opportunities. I, I do just reiterate what was said, all sites had adequate site distances for turning in and turning out, so no site was excluded on a traffic parking basis. Next, please. So, took all that programming that Rachel showed you, and we've put that into, um, what is in the middle here, the yellow area is your existing school building, and then the orange on the back is the addition that Reece pointed out. There's a ramp that takes you from the parking lot to the first floor, so that's one issue already. We, we'd love to have our senior centers right at grade so you come in without a ramp or without a stair. Because of the existing condition, you see that you come into that lobby, it's a relatively small space, not a huge amount of space for those things that Rachel talked about, the socialization, the card playing, way to turn a lobby into an activity space. We're using the existing elevator that's added on to the building, um, that creates a relatively tight elevator space, but it is efficient, and it, it's a nice use of money that had already been spent. The backside of the building is that multipurpose room. Rachel talked about it being divisible into two. Um, here we're showing the opportunity for it to be divisible into three. The kitchen is on the left, that pink area, very much like the Falmouth with a commercial kitchen but a center island, so it, it can be used, uh, in many different ways. Uh, the administrative space is in the existing building at the front. You can see we're taking out the old school stair, turning what's a big circulation loss of space into actually usable space. Next slide. The unfortunate aspect of, of this building is it's existing two stories, and because of the two sto- the tight site, any addition would have to be a two-story addition in order to get that 12,650 square foot program onto the site. So, on the second floor, on the addition in orange at the top of the page, we have our exercise space, what I mentioned is really, I think, a commendable program at the Sturbridge Senior Center. There's also a cardio workout room, there's a health office, the health and wellness office is located here so that there's another administrative eye on this floor. You don't want to have a floor without an administrative function to make sure if, if there's a, a problem, there's an administrator on that level. And that small meeting room that Rachel went into some, uh, length about is on this level, and it's got so many uses from staff to the men's club, to bidding club, to, uh, professional offices, to, uh, will and tax advisory services. That's just a really well-used room. That's just the game room in front of the building. So that has all the program with the attendant issues of it being on two levels, and it being spread out, and, and the elevator and the stair in the middle really cut the building into two pieces. It doesn't flow in the way that we'd like it to. So, the next image shows a building that we could put together with your program on the new site. And what's really wonderful about this building is you come in the front door, and there's that lobby, just as Rachel explained it. Big enough to provide an anteroom to your multipurpose rooms, but also big enough to have seating area and activities in it, so it's that real life of the building part of the center space. There's an administrator reception area where you can, uh, sign in on the right. All your offices are to the right side. That conference meeting room is at the far end of the building with privacy in that ni- nice light. As you move to the left of the building, we have the exercise, your game room, your workout space. So, admin on the right, activity on the left, and right in the middle then is your big multipurpose room. And that big multipurpose room twists itself to the outside space, which is one of the really wonderful aspects of a new building that you can't get at the existing building, that you have this wonderful relationship of lobby, multipurpose room to the outside that is unique on Cedar or Haynes Street where we're able to use this plan. Next. So the, the last thing we did was put together cost estimates. Um, the, uh, 70 Cedar is in the middle, which is the recommended scheme, and I know you can't quite read all those numbers, and I'm not intending that you do, but I'm just showing that there are a lot of things that go into the project other than construction cost. We have furniture, audiovisual, we have kitchen wares, et cetera. So, on the right is a blow-up for 70 Cedar Street, which is the recommended site, shows the construction costs, utility charges, furniture, audiovisual, equipment, kitchen equipment that goes in. Lot costs are, uh, design fees, you have to move your building, so those costs are put into there. As, as you move your program from 40, 480 Main Street to Cedar at the end of the job, we have to account for those move costs and other contingencies. So that, that created a base project of $10 million, uh, $26,000. There were two discretionary, discretionary elements at Cedar Street. The committee wanted to put in new high-speed fiber because we look at these buildings as being 50 to 100-meter projects. That building's going to be around and used for a long time, so we want to have good high-speed fiber capacity that can accommodate growth over time. And that center site location that Lance mentioned is, is a little bit more expensive. It gives you flexibility over time, it protects the, the buffers, as Reece pointed out, but there is a premium to that site. There would be discretionary items that would go with 80 Haynes Street to provide additional parking, or 480 Main Street to provide other aspects as we, uh, went forward. But you can see that the difference in cost is, is relatively minor between schemes, about $350,000 to $400,000 at the maximum difference between the options. So, with that, I think the concept is you pick the best site. The cost isn't really, uh, when you're looking at a project for this amount of length of time, cost shouldn't, uh, the cost at that level of magnitude isn't really the main criteria, it's what's the best site for the long term. Uh, next.
So, yeah. So I had the pleasure of working with the study committee, whose goal was to ensure that the chosen site met all of the needs, um, and they evaluated the options that were put in front of them, not only for the cost, but for the program goals, the building goals, and community benefits, to allow for future growth of the community. They also concluded that 70 Cedar Street would be ideal, and part of that also could serve the population growth of the Sturbridge that is projected to go to over 3,300 seniors by 2030. The recommended site, uh, here's a larger plan of that. At 70 Cedar Street, the roads are now, um, are here in brown for Cedar Street, Karen Road, and Seneca Lane. None of those roads are directly impacted by this project. There is a 100-foot buffer that the committee, um, requested be put forward so that we could have the protection of those residents on Karen Road, Seneca Lane, um, and have that face buffer. And additionally, the additional green space that just appeared on your screen is other wooded areas that currently would, is though not be impacted by this current project. Leslie, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Robyn. This study was performed prior to COVID, so there are new guidelines that may be put in place and kept in place, and with those new guidelines, there are new issues that have been addressed. What we're looking for is something that we can do with all what has need to be done in this project going forward at 70 Cedar will, will have us what we need. We all this to our aging community.
And some of the opportunities for the future of this site also that it can be an emergency shelter or heating and cooling center, and will serve more than 1,000 residents. Um, it'll be space for the next several generations, so this building will be used by anybody who's currently age 40 or higher, or even 30, could be used for a much longer time than that. Um, Cedar Street provides outdoor programming options and multi-generational opportunities. So, the committee is recommending to the Board of Southwestmen, um, to consider a new construction option at 70 Cedar Street to allow easy replacement of, of the community Any questions? Does the board have any questions?
Um, this is Mike, I, I have a question about each site. Uh, first, uh, the first, uh, one would be about, uh, uh, the 80 Haynes, uh, site. There, there's, uh, the issue of, uh, the conservation restriction that's on the property. Uh, I was wondering if, uh, in, in the packet that we got it, one of the recommendations, early recommendations was, uh, E, uh, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs should have been contacted, you know, regarding that issue. Were they ever contacted or, um, uh, to see if, you know, see, see what their, uh, pers- uh, position was on, on removal of the conservation restriction?
I, Mike, this is Jeff. I, I had an initial, I think I put that in the packet, I had an initial conversation with OPACOM, and
Yeah.
They, you know, expressed an open mind, but through this process of, and due to COVID, a lot of those conversations didn't proceed. So if the board wants to pursue 80 Haynes, then we'll have to engage in that process, uh, really to see if there's an interest. As I wrote in my memo, the challenge, I think, is really going to be, uh, the, the coalition, the CPC coalition, not, our, not our local CPC group, but the statewide coalition, because I did hear from them, and they are very concerned that any removal of a deed restriction is detrimental to the program statewide. So that's, that's going to be the challenge there.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the coalition, but that's not, uh, EEIA.
Right.
And the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And I just wanted to, you know, I didn't know if we even went to that first step. Um, the, the second question was about 70, uh, Cedar Street. The, there was a comment that there was less traffic there than at, uh, 480, uh, Main, and actually at Cedar and Main Street, there's considerably more traffic getting out onto Main Street from Cedar Street than there would be at, uh, Arnold Road and Main Street. So, I, you know, I, they skipped over the traffic, uh, study, but, uh, you know, the, and also the fact for transportation, there's no access to pedestrian or bicycle transportation that, you know, that doesn't, uh, comply with, you know, uh, state policy. The, uh, 480 Main Street, uh, parcel went, you know, before we ever started this study, uh, I brought up that, uh, that the, uh, Good, uh, Goodroll property was available, and the, the owner, you know, was willing to, you know, do some, make some kind of, uh, uh, you know, arrangement with the town for that being included with the 480 Main Street parcel for development, uh, and that would have, uh, that would possibly reduce the, uh, the site development costs and, and the ability to have access at the same level as the first floor of the existing building. So I, and, and maybe even eliminate the need for two-story addition, but, uh, it, I don't think that was even considered at 480 Main Street.
Um, Mike, um, I'll ask Jeff-
Mike, I'll ask Jeff, but I do believe that the people were approached after you had brought the subject up, and they really weren't interested.
They, I think, Mary, if I may, the comment I got back was, you know, a temporary easement for parking. And I spoke to the owner of that property for an easement for parking, and she corrected me in that she was willing to sell us that strip for parking. But this very much, this study very much looked at what could we do with the properties we own, not acquiring additional property to make the project work? Because there was no guarantee we could acquire that property, particularly if we wanted to see if we could make the program work on either, any of those three sites. Now, if the board chooses and says, you know what, we want to stay at Forty Eighty Main, we'd have to look then to see, okay, can we acquire a piece of that property to enhance what's available at Forty Eighty Main?
Yeah. You know, the other issue with, with Forty Eighty Main, you know, we do have the existing property, but I, you know, the question was asked whether or not the Goodroll property would make that project work better, and I don't know if that's been answered. The other question that I had about Seventy Cedar is originally that property was to be used for recreation purposes. That was the purpose of acquiring or having. And if we put the senior center there, we lose that property for recreation.
I think Robin has an answer to that.
Yes, one of the ideas, Mike, to keep the senior center to one side of the site or the other, but to maintain a buffer, actually could allow us to put a second soccer field. So, right now, we're working on Sixty Cedar and looking at whether that's viable for a field. And if we were to look at Seventy as well for a second field as we initially were looking at, we actually could still fit a rec field here with the senior center and the additional parking. The acreage is sufficient to do that without endangering the wetland buffer and without impacting Karen Road and Seneca Lane.
Okay, so we'd end up with one soccer field.
Exactly, two.
Two?
One on sixty, one on seventy?
Two on seventy, or one on sixty and one on seventy? One on each, okay. So, we basically lose a soccer field or a couple playing, at least one playing field if we put the senior center on Seventy. I thought Seventy was capable of, you know, two or three playing fields.
Well, I think that's really, yeah, I think that's really where we are, right? The Board of Selectmen asked to review these three sites. If you, you know, and this was the conflict we had a year ago, who gets to use Seventy? Because it is under the purview
Exactly.
It's under the Board of Selectmen's purview. So, I think at this point, we've shown that you can put a senior center on it. We've shown we can put a ball field next to it. But if the board wants to say this is only for ball fields, that is your prerogative. We just gave you a feasibility study to say we can do this. And it's a lot to digest in a short period of time, so, you know, at some point, maybe we should, maybe we should talk about next steps on how to vet this information and come to a conclusion, if there's one to be had.
Right.
Thank you, Mike. I also think it would be useful to pursue what Mike had originally suggested with respect to that Goodroll property. Maybe less in passing and more in writing. It would have been helpful to have that, but personally, there's a lot of information to digest, and I want to hear a little bit more from stakeholders. I think the committee did a great job, thank you, for members of the committee and the architects. But there's a lot of, lot of residents that we should listen to, and I want their, I want their input. So, my own suggestion is going to be that we have at least one public hearing, maybe two. I want to hear from the seniors that currently use the current senior center. I've had a few people approach me and indicate how endeared they are to the current senior center. I'm not saying there aren't seniors out there that would like to be on Cedar Street. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying those that have approached me. So, I think it's very useful for something this size, I think we did something similar with Burgess, is we should have a couple of public hearings where we can get residents to come forward and say what their needs are, what their desires are. We did get one, thank you, Jeff, resident on Cedar Street that's concerned with whatever traffic, increase in traffic that will occur to their neighborhood. Perhaps it won't, but these are the people I want to get in. I want to get in some residents from Cedar Street. As far as that Shepherd parcel goes, I'm just going to reiterate what I have said right along. There are also costs that are not monetary costs. And one of the costs is that really divided the town when we went forward a number of years ago now to attempt to put a soccer field on that parcel. And that still would have been a legitimate use of that land because active recreation is included in CPC funds. So, I know the state said they're concerned removing a deed restriction because that might impact the program as a whole. It wouldn't have impacted with a soccer field because we put no permanent structures on it. Now, having said that, we just needed to clarify the deed, and it's still divided the town. And all we were doing was putting a field on it. I recall all, not all, Mary moved and resigned, but a number of members of the Recreation Committee that year all resigned. They were very fed up because they thought the Shepherd parcel was going to be recreation. Now, we're going back long before Jeff. I can't imagine that the pulse of the community is going to want to remove a deed restriction and remove it entirely from conservation when we could not even do it for soccer fields with movable fences. And I just think that's an obstacle that I personally, you know, if the rest of the board wants to put it down, but I personally wouldn't, wouldn't vote to do that. The deed restriction's on at this point. The time to have, we didn't even have a deed restriction when we tried to make them soccer fields. So, I just, and with the CPC at the state level expressing their concern to Jeff about what it would do to the program as a whole, I would be very surprised if our own committee, our own local CPC, would go against the state and actually stamp their approval on this. So, I mean, the Haynes, I just think have costs that are not, that are too big to try to go down. And I don't want to pitch conservation people against people who want senior, a new senior center and removing deed restrictions. And I don't think it would fly at town meeting. I just don't. That's my own feeling on that property. But of course, I mean, you know, only time will tell if we put it on the meeting warrant. But I'm not in a position tonight to make any kind of decision. It was a good overview, but I really think we need to talk to the community at large. And my other, I just have a couple of things. And I think it would be useful to discuss this also in more depth at our retreat, too. I really want to move forward for the seniors. I think there's been a need for a long time, but I have a lot of concern with the timing of all of this because we're in the middle of the pandemic. We don't know when the vaccine's going to be available to the general public, and they're saying April through June. But even with the vaccine, there's a lot of people that the next week, they're not going to be willing to go to a town meeting. And I want to make sure we have a big turnout at a town meeting. I have some reservation about whether this is the right time in June to put a ten-million-dollar project on when we're in the middle of a very unprecedented time economically and in terms of a public health crisis. I feel terrible with respect to the timing, but unless there's a big turnout at town meeting, and I know there were a lot of residents last year that were very upset how we went forward with town meeting, and really, we just helped constant our budget. We didn't try to introduce anything of this magnitude, a ten-million-dollar project. So, that's just something to think about in terms of the timing. But I would like, I would like a couple of public hearings to talk to the stakeholders. One thing that I also have concern with is if we do go to the Shepherd parcel or to Cedar Street, you know, what are we going to do with our existing building? I, for one, think that's a big part of Service's history, to the extent you can hold on to beautiful buildings. I don't think communities get rid of them that easily. You know, the prettiest communities in the Commonwealth are those that have kept some of their heritage. So, that's an added cost, right? If we build someplace else, now we have the senior center. We know from town meeting that residents didn't even want to sell the old fire station, which I think people are less attached to than the senior center. So, I personally would not want to put that up for sale. I'm very attached to our history. So, now we have to figure out what are we going to do with that? We're going to have to maintain that building. We're going to have to repurpose it. So, that is an added cost to building elsewhere that is not part of this feasibility study, but it's definitely an added cost because as a board and as a community, we have to figure out what we would do with the senior center that we have. And then lastly, I'd like to hear from Recreation. I'm sorry they're not here this evening, because two years ago, we were hoping to look at feasibility studies for both, so we could do, engage in some kind of comparison, a feasibility study for the senior center and what we could do with field. And we don't have that. We only have the feasibility study for the senior center. I want to know, I believe they're still interested very much in Cedar Street as well. They already have Sixty. It's where our recreation is, and it's where our school is. So, again, I'd want to meet with Recreation and some of the stakeholders that have a role to play in this.
Okay, Jeff, can I just respond to Mary's? Mary, to answer a couple of your concerns, as far as the Haynes Street property, I think that's pretty much everyone's opinion that that is not viable, so we shouldn't get too concerned about that. The idea of what's going to happen in senior, that's not a concern for what the Study Committee is charged with. They were simply charged with to look at the feasibility of three sites that are truly cheap cost estimate. That's all we did, and they did it.
Oh, of course.
No, I know, I understand.
I can't hear you very
If far as the senior center, what's going to happen to it, that's down low. That would be another committee, another concern, but it is not anything to do with just this feasibility study.
If I may.
Jeff? Can I respond? Yes.
Yeah. All great, all great points, and none of it's going to be settled this evening. So, I think the idea of continuing a conversation about all this is a good idea. You heard a lot of good things tonight. You had some great questions. I think moving this to a conversation and also getting input from the community is a very positive thing. I agree that we want to make sure when we bring this, if we bring this to town meeting, it provides an opportunity for everybody to participate. So, it may not be something we do on the June meeting. We may have to wait till the fall meeting to make sure we can have as many people out there as possible. But that is contingent upon the board coming to a conclusion. And right now, there is no conclusion to be had. It's a study of three potential sites. Each one has its positives, each one has its negatives, and we, as a group, have to wait through that to come to some conclusion. Now, on the Rec piece, hear from Rec, but they are currently doing a feasibility study on Sixty Cedar Street for a multi-use turf field. So, they're doing that, and some of that extends into Seventy. I think having synergy there is positive, but we'll hear from the Rec Committee. Also, there's going to be comments about retrofitting the existing senior center from the Historic Commission. They have concerns about what we do to that building from an overhaul. So, I think the community as a whole has some great input that we all need to hear before any conclusion is reached. And I have another email from to send to you.
I'd like to hear the presentation and the conclusion. And the committee's decision.
I know you asked if you had any questions, and that's why I responded, but I would like to readdress something that I raised, though. I just want to say, Mary, I never said that this feasibility study has to look into what we were going to do with the current senior center. That is not what I said. But I do disagree that it's something that only has to be looked at down the road. I think that question has to be looked at in conjunction with deciding where the best site is, because that's what residents will ask. If we want to build a new center, the next logical question is, what are you going to do with what you have? I don't think that's a question to be answered separate from where we're going to put our senior center. I think it has to be looked at in conjunction with. I just have a little bit of a different approach there.
Okay.
And then? Madam Jeff, can I speak? Ken, who's talking?
Ken White is trying to speak, Mary.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Ken, go ahead.
It's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. And for those that don't know, Ken was the chairman of the Study Committee.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now, go ahead, Ken.
Oh, okay. Just to clear up a few things. As far as Seventy Cedar Street, there was no restrictions on it. If there was, we wouldn't even look at it. We wouldn't waste our time looking at a piece of property that had restrictions on it. At that time, it wasn't listed for recreation on the information that we were given. The Eight Brook Road, when we asked for a list of town-owned properties, that wasn't on it at that time, and I had the list with me. That's why Eight Brook Road was never looked at. And I don't know if it would, we only looked at town-owned properties, not less than three acres. I don't know how many acres that property is anyway, but that's the reason why we didn't look at that. You know, it's another thing that I come up with, just to clear up those three things. We didn't look at Midway Brook Road because it wasn't on the list. And Seventy Cedar Street, there was no restrictions. That's it.
Okay, Ken. Thank you, Ken. Anyone else on the board have a question or a comment?
Wonderful.
So, we will get the answers. Robin?
I just want to say also to everyone that today, we posted a copy electronically of the study and the recommended plan available on our news page on service.gov. If anybody's interested in reading the full report or the details on any of the buildings. And I'd like to thank Ken for seeing this through for the last couple of years. I know it's been a long haul for him.
Yes.
Yes, Ken, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so we will
I'm the team effort.
We will continue gathering information, and we will continue meeting. And Mary, no one disagrees that we need the public input, but with the twenty-five person limit right now, hopefully things will clear up.
Oh, I agree.
It's going to change a lot of things.
It's very unfortunate, the timing of it. And Ken, I do feel for the committee because it's very difficult not to meet in person and to have a give and take and to have an in-person conversation. Can I ask the architects one question? Can I ask the architects one question?
Sure.
You know, you indicated on Cedar that it might have difficulty with an elder bus. And I'm surprised elder buses can't go on country roads. I mean, is there, do they restrict themselves to main thoroughfare?
No, the concern was from the traffic analysis that trying to be as clear and open about any issues, that that road's a little bit narrow and winding and the bus is a little wider than a normal vehicle. So it was just, it was pointing out that right now access isn't there. It could be provided, but she was just pointing out that obstacle. Jeff?
Just to, if I may, Madam Chief, a follow-up. I think one thing to realize and we can get into this a little bit more as we vet these, these outcomes here or these, these options. Cedar, that road that goes into the Cedar Street rec area is going to need significant upgrade regardless of whether we put a senior center out there or the rec field out there. The traffic is going to be different. So I think the expectation is we're going to have to do some upgrades to that road, including storm drainage and everything else. So looking at access from its current alignment and current condition of that road is probably not something that's going to be the outcome if we, if we move there with either a senior center or their new ball field or both.
Okay, so you're saying if we ended up there, we would, the road would be able to accommodate the elder bus?
Yeah, we have to upgrade the road regardless of what we did out there.
Okay.
Particularly with access that Mike was talking about.
Everyone from BH and involved and Robin and Leslie is to be continued as they say.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, BH and H.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
And next time again, we have departments report, these departments.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good night.
Good, thank you. Well, with November's report, then I'll move into December's and take any questions that you may have. For November, operations are pretty much at its core as, as we can be for the COVID nineteen pandemic that we're facing right now. Nothing major to report. We continue with our training efforts, mostly remote training. We have been able to get some officers to training at other, other locations. Operations continue to stay as new. Nothing significant to report for November. December, we did have a few highlights that I'd like to point out. We had the senior dinner this year. We had to adapt. We normally have the seniors at the senior center. However, this year we worked with Leslie Wong and her crew down at senior center. And Village Pizza donated spaghetti meatballs as they usually do. And we created a drive-through at the senior center. So as the seniors drove up, they were provided with a meal and a small gift. And like every year, Barbara Boito, I'll give her credit. She was the lead in that and she set all that up. So she did a fantastic job with that. We also held our annual toy drive, which was very successful. I'm sure we made a lot of children happy for Christmas. In addition to that, in December, we accompanied, accompanied the fire department, Santa Claus ride through town, and that was very successful as well. The last important thing for December is we welcomed back Officer Patterson to our rank and file after her over nine month long tour in Afghanistan. So we were happy to get her back. She said, operationally wise, that was our December. Continue our training efforts in December. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments? I see cars are still being stolen. It's still mostly people who lose their cars. I'm lost in the keys in them.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. That's my side note. I missed that. I've continuously asked, I put out some code reds, and I'm pleading with the public to please lock your, lock your doors, take your keys out. That is the MO that these individuals are doing. They're stealing the cars. January, we've already had two cars stolen. And I believe we're up over twenty for last year. So although we are recovering, a lot of the cars in the same location in Hartford, these crimes, we can mitigate them just by easily taking your keys out and locking your doors. Days of leaving your keys in your car and going to their house are over. We're, we're right off of day before they're coming down, jumping off. And there's three or four of them. We've caught them on camera and they will park in the neighborhood, all four doors open, and they start going to all different houses till they find something. And next thing you know, they're out. They're not stopping for the police and it's very dangerous to get in pursuits with these, these people. We don't want any innocent people get hurt when we could have stopped this in the first place. So thank you, Mary, for bringing that up.
No, no problem. Okay, anyone else? Okay, chief, while you're here, we can, I'm sure Nelson and Jeff won't mind on their reports and we can go to your appointment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Philip, are you, are you with us, Phil?
Yes, sir, man, Philip.
All right. Tonight, I present to you Philip Derry. He is coming to us from Fort Myers Police Department in Florida. Why he's coming from Florida up here to the chilly weather is beyond me. But he did so good in his interview that we're willing to take him on board. He is a former Army Military Police Officer. And he is currently working on his degree for psychology. He has moved up into Massachusetts because you're not commuting, right, Phil? So he's, he's kind of come up here and, and we're looking forward to getting him on board. He's completed all the requirements. I, I have already volunteered municipal police training committee and they have granted him a permanent exemption. He just needs to get his firearm certification, which he will get tomorrow. If he's appointed tonight, he will report the work and we'll have him certified. I'll send the letter off and we'll get his permanent exemption.
Any questions in the board? Comments?
I just, looking at the resume, it, it says that Philip worked until two thousand eighteen, in January two thousand eighteen in Fort Myers. And there's nothing further on the resume from January eighteenth to present. Is there, has he been working or is it elsewhere or?
Yeah, I believe that might be. No, I believe that might be a typo, Philip. Maybe you can answer, but he, he just recently put his notice in within the last three weeks. And he is coming from there within the last three or four weeks.
Okay.
The resume I'm looking at says June eighteen to present, Fort Myers Police Department. So I can go over that with you, Mike, if you need to.
Oh, I didn't see, yeah, I didn't see June eighteen. I saw up till January of two thousand eighteen.
Says June.
Okay, no, no problem. It's been asked, questions asked and answered. I'm satisfied.
Now, those were two different jobs, Mike.
Yeah.
January eighteenth one that ended with a collectional officer. Doesn't vary. Okay? Anyone else have a question or a comment? Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Philip Derry as a full-time police officer with the Service Police Department, effective January twenty second, twenty twenty-one, at a starting salary of twenty-nine fifteen per hour.
There a second?
Mike, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Derry, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Welcome aboard, Mr. Derry.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Phil. Welcome, Phil.
Good luck.
Very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, sir.
Keith, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Okay, so back to reports. We have building department. Nelson?
My dog has just taken off his bike. Can you hang on a second? Okay, hey, good evening. How about you? My, yeah. So my, let me, let me just let them outside.
Can we fly? Is Ian here tonight? Don't.
Am I okay? Do my report.
Well, that's it.
Okay, yeah, I, I let him out, no good the whole time too, right up to then. So anyways, my report's going to be for November, December. Basically, as far as daily operations, you know, with the virus and everything, we're keeping it as normal as we can. I think we're doing pretty good. We're, you know, still, you know, doing our precautions. If, if, like, for instance, if it's a new house and nobody's there, we go in and inspect on site. Or if it's something outside or whatever, there happens to be a renovation and it's inside and there's a lot of people and we can't seem to get them out while we're in, we will take some pictures and stuff and ask questions and do different things. But all in all, like, you know, we're fulfilling our, you know, our requirements, I believe on that. As far as zoning, the last couple of months, it's just the typical questions. There's no big issue that I know of that has came up. It was, you know, business as usual on that, you know, the same questions we get asked most of the time. Residential building permits, there's, and for November, December, there's a hundred and ninety-one permits. And the total value of the permit fees is twenty-seven thousand, six eighty-nine, sixty-nine. For commercial building permits for those two months, there was seven commercial permits. Electrical, gas, plumbing, for November and December, the electrical permits, they go fifty-six. Gas permits, thirty-three, and plumbing, twenty. What I have is specific upcoming and ongoing commercial projects to keep you up to date as to what's going on. The first one I listed was the Pilot Travel Center. Just, just to, to refresh people, and I've said that at other meetings, but I'm just saying it for the public. The old restaurant, the large restaurant is gone down now. They have a lot of their site reconfigured. As far as the gas pumps, if, if you were to go down there, there's like two gas pump tops there, like red. The first one you see is the smaller one. It's in front of the, it's in front of the new travel center, which would be for like cars, regular cars and trucks, you know, like, like single cars, single trucks, you know, not the large ones. And then you've got the, almost fourteen thousand dollar travel center right in back of it. It's up now. The outside's pretty well, I won't say completed, but it's well on its way. The inside, they've got the walls all up. They've got some of their mechanical in there. I was told by the supervisor on the, on the job, they're hoping to occupy it February seventeenth. Don't hold us to it. Maybe February, March. If you look right in back of that building, you, you'll see the other gas pumps. That's going to be the nine gas pumps for the, for the larger trucks. They're rerouting all the trucks so that as they go, they're actually going to pull in, pull back towards the road as they take the pumps and then go back out, up above. And then down below is the access for the, for the smaller pumps and all the cars. And they both meet kind of in the middle where the, where their travel center is so that, you know, the, the truckers are mostly in the back and they can come in from that side. And, and any, like, no, people that aren't truckers would be coming into the, to the front of the building where there's parking for that. So it kind of makes a lot of sense. Hopefully it, it helps. As Jeff knows and everybody knows, there's still a lot of traffic here and trucks and stuff. But hopefully, I guess the old saying is it has to get worse before it gets better. And that could, in that particular case, I guess it's true. The other thing is three sixty-five Main, which is at Care, Give a Patient Connection. That's at adult marijuana retail facility. We did issue a, a CFC on it, the final. They have pretty much everything done there. The outside's done, the shrubs are up, stuff like that. In that building in the front, there's almost four, five thousand square feet. It's going to be for the marijuana adult use. To the back of the building, it's still, not that it's empty, but they're just waiting to see what they're going to use to build it up to. It's twenty-four hundred square feet. If you were to look inside, basically the walls and everything are there with the insulation, but there's nothing finished. And I don't, they're planning to finish it when they figure out what's going to go in there. I know they're looking for a lot of help, spot or something, but I don't think they've actually found anybody yet. The next thing I listed is that they're still going to do that new in cold storage on Picker Road. And there's actually a couple of them that, that Gene has brought my attention to. Picker Road and then Chelton Road, there, there's another small one they're talking about doing there too. And then that mobile retirement community, they're, they're getting that, that driveway passed through there so that they, for that proposed sixty-five lot with the clubhouse and everything, with the manufactured homes, it's to the right of the Edwards Gas, the old Jack Gas. Four twenty-three Main, that's next to, I call it the old basket though. It's where that old apartment was, that five apartments. They've got the outside pretty much sited, the inside's the tish and everything. The building really, really looks nice and it was pretty run down and beat up. So that's a, that's a good thing also for the, for the town. Possible upcoming projects is that Noble Energy Travel Center, that former truck stop, the Forge Truck Stop. Another interesting thing, Rapsgalian, they're going to open a tap, tap room and they're going to serve white food, similar to the old site that was up the street on our road. They're not going to actually make the beer there, but they're going to have it there. They've got a place that they're going to in Spencer to make it. And it's right across from the senior center in that red building. It's the upper part of the red building that they're going to, it'll be above Home Field Brewery. So there'll be two, two places in there and I think it's going to work well together. One, because one's open different hours than the other one. So I think it's going to work out for both tenants. Twenty-nine Brookfield Road, we still, there's, there's talks about George's Pizza there. And I know he's, he's trying to get that together and what they're going to do there and different things. He, he's going to put in a building permit pretty soon from what he's telling me. He hasn't yet, he's supposed to. Cornerstone Bank, they're going to update their front entrance and stuff. I haven't quite signed the permit yet. After my review, there was a few things on the paperwork that they have to adjust. And as soon as they adjust them, I am going to issue the permit. They're changing the whole front of it. They're getting back, getting rid of the cupillos on the roof. And the, the design looks pretty nice. It's going to update the whole looks of the building. That basically is my report for the two months. Is there any questions? Yeah, to answer them.
Any questions in the board? Eight?
Yeah, I just, one, so Nelson, at the Pilot Travel Station, because I know it's under construction, heavy construction now, the end game is to fix the issue with the eighteen wheelers on Route fifteen. Once it's complete, that should flow better through there than what's going on right now.
Yeah, you can talk on that too if you want, Gene, but yeah, I mean, basically... basically, they're gonna come in, the larger trucks are gonna come in at the upper driveway. As they come in, they're actually gonna turn, but there's a lot of parking in the back, so they can either choose to park or turn, and then when they turn, they're coming back out with the pumps chiseled. And when they come back out, there's another section, it's the same upper driveway, but it's like divided, so they can come out there and then turn. And then the smaller vehicles won't even interfere with them, because they're gonna be pulling in front of the building, and they got a lot of parking for them. And, and, and then they'll be able to use the, uh, you know, the, um, building as the restaurant part itself, so yes, it should. Once they're done, it should really help. I think the layout's a lot better than, than they had in the past, as far as traffic pass.
That's, that's great to hear.
Any, anyone else? Mary? Mary?
Um, yes. Well, at least they're not parking on Route fifteen. With all our signs, I noticed the tractor trailers are no longer parking on the side of the road, which is good. We really have a lot of signs. I guess we needed that many? I don't know. Compared to last summer, they were parking on both sides and there was traffic. Um, quite a bit of traffic heading to that area of town, to Lead Mine. But anyways, Nelson, four twenty-three Main does look awesome. Are they, they're gonna be four artist studios, or are they gonna stay five apartments? Or, I, I didn't totally...
Um...
We have parentheses, four artist studios. Is that what they're going to be now?
Yeah, yes, they're gonna be artist studios. They're actually gonna be, you know, they're gonna...
Uh, like, eight... What kind of artists? Like, painting artists, or...?
Could be painting, uh, clay, sculpturing. Things like that. I'm not sure if they even know exactly what, uh, what they're gonna do.
Okay, so they don't have, they don't have tenants yet?
Yeah, they, I, I don't think they do, not that they know of.
No, Dean just said no.
They don't, okay. I hope there's a, a market for that many artist studios, because it's a beautiful building now, and it was a real eyesore.
Doesn't it look nice? And, and they did some major work to it. I mean, they changed cells, they, they took out the flooring, I mean, it was falling in. I mean, I, I can't say enough good things as far as... You know, that's all his sons, and I'll tell you what, the hardware looks really, really nice.
Now, are the studios such that if they can't find four artists, that it could be like a retail shop, or is it strictly set up to be?
It's set up for, for, uh...
Artists?
Yeah, for apartments.
For, not for apartments, for art, for studios?
Well, studio apartments.
What is your name? What, uh, June? June can clarify everything. June?
They're live-work studios, Mary. So they're residential units with a large studio space, so it could be used by an author, a photographer, a painter. So it's for somebody who is in the arts, some form of arts, but it's a place for them to live and also have enough space for them to work. There won't be any retail allowed on the site because there's a lack of parking, but, you know, they'll be able to, for instance, maybe if somebody gave a music lesson, they would be able to have one, you know, one child come over for their music lesson or something like that.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, that they can live there as well. So it's like an apartment... Okay, okay, 'cause I thought, boy, four studios, just, you know, commercial studios. I didn't realize that there would be a big market, but they can live there and accommodate their art. Okay, got it.
Okay, anything else from anyone? Okay, thank you, Nelson.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Nelson.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have, uh, my report in the packet. Uh, just a couple other items. Um, we received a notice from the union with the firefighters that they're, they're ready to start negotiations, so at an upcoming board of selectmen meeting, we'll bring you have an executive session to discuss proposals on that one. I sent you some information this afternoon on the, uh, issue with well number one and the fuel leak at the lodges. Uh, so there's an update from Butch on that. He's on the line tonight if, if you have any questions. Um, also, the retreat is, uh, set. Alex is gonna be reaching out uh, later this week or first next week to talk about the arrangements for the, for the, uh, noon time meal for you all. Um, other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on my report.
Do you have any questions? And, uh, there's a Jeff. On the, um, next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on this historical commission grant application that I assume you're presenting.
Yes. Um, good evening, thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of the Historical Commission this evening. So I worked with the Historical Commission in November, and we, um, applied for a pre-application status with Mass Historic to get funding to do a historic, a community-wide historic preservation plan. So there were twenty-seven pre-applications, and out of those twelve were selected to go on to apply for the full application. Six, uh, certified local governments were also selected. So I feel that was pretty good, being selected to move forward, so we've completed the application. And, um, Mr. Blanchard is here this evening. He can talk about... He actually went to the Community Preservation Committee, and they've pledged to support the fifteen thousand dollar MASH that we need for the grant. And so it's funded. The total project will be around thirty thousand dollars. And it will give us a community-wide historic preservation plan, which is something that's been called for in our, um, Renaissance survey, reconnaissance survey, excuse me, that was done in two thousand and seven, and our master plan that was done in two thousand and eleven. So as you know, we have many historic assets in the community, both in the built environment and even some archaeological features, and we felt very important, this would be a great tool to educate the public, as well as educate policymakers such as the Historical Commission, the Planning Board, and even myself, when we're reviewing applications, so we understand what's really significant in our community and how to go about preserving that, because after all, that's what makes it unique. So we're here this evening to ask the board to authorize the chair to sign the grant application so that I can get this sent in next week. Actually, surprisingly, we have to mail mail. They do not take electronic copies. Maybe it's part of their historic nature, I'm not sure. Uh, we do also have, uh, the Historical Commission met this week, and they are in support of the application, and they've given a letter of support as well. So we're selected for this grant. My department would take the lead. I would be the local project contact, and we would work closely with the Historical Commission to get the plan completed, so it could be an exciting project.
Any questions from the board? Any comment?
Uh, Mike, I'd like to comment that, that it's a really good uh, job getting this grant, uh, or at least the ability to apply for it, because this is... The last few years, these grants have been, become very competitive. Uh, several years ago, there was more, a lot more historic money available, and now it's really dried up. Unfortunately, that's something the state should really look at, but especially if we have, uh, you know, uh, as a result of this study, we have some, some money we have to spend on preserving, uh, structures and things like that. Hopefully, the state will come up to the plate at some point, point in the future, but... Uh, yeah, I would, I would like to, uh, make a motion to authorize permission of the grant request by the Historical Commission.
Okay, and to have the chair sign?
And to have the chair sign the grant application.
Do you have a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Kate?
Yes, Chase.
Ike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, June.
Good job. Very, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay. Actually, a consideration and possible action on a twenty-twenty-one dock permit for the residents at seventy-six Shore Drive. Kate, does anybody have any question on it? Pretty clear, cut and dry.
Yes, there's an existing dock. They're, they're just, they're, they're updating it. Uh, it's a few square feet bigger, but it's in the same footprint. Uh, the owner is on the call tonight if you have any questions.
Yes. Anyone have any questions? Because I know Mr. Manor is always thorough in his applications and in his research. But does anybody have any questions? Okay, somebody wanna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the dock permit for seventy-six Olsford Drive.
Mike, second. Michael, second.
That's him. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Kate?
Chase, yes.
Ike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, good luck, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Peter.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have consideration, possible action on equipment. It's been Burlingame, heavy equipment operator in the Department of Public Works. Coach, that's fine.
Yes, we, uh, we launched a guy a few months ago, and we haven't backfilled that position yet, so I advertised it. And believe it or not, we only had two applicants, and they were both internal. Uh, Ben is the, uh, senior of the applicants. He also has every license conceivable for everything we, uh, we own. So he doesn't operate anything. He's very talented. And he was acting as a, um, he was a mechanic, a backup mechanic for the last six years, but he'd like to get back out in the field, and and he has a lot of experience with equipment. I guess he did some construction work on the side when he was younger, but, uh, I'd like to put him in that position.
Any questions from the board? Okay, someone? Ike, you saying?
Does this mean you're gonna have to try to find another, another backup mechanic?
Yes, Ben, Ben's back, his background is carpentry. He's, uh, he's very mechanical, but he's not officially a mechanic, so this kinda works out in, in all aspects.
Great.
Any, anyone else? Someone wanna make a motion then?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Ben Burlingame as heavy equipment operator in Sturgis Department of Public Works, effective immediately.
Second, Chase.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Kate, how do you vote?
Chase, yes.
Ike, how do you vote?
Ike, yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Butch.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Butch.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on appraisal services for Eight Brookfield Road. Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Um, we're in the process of developing the RFP for sale or lease of Eight, Eight Brookfield Road based upon, you know, the conversations of the past eighteen months or so. Um, in order for us to dispose of property, we need an appraisal. Uh, so I reached out to Guthrie Associates. They've done appraisals for us over the past couple of years. Got a quote. Uh, they would look at both the sale price and what a lease should bring, a triple net lease would bring. Um, you'll see the draft RFP uh, for publication once the appraisal's done in your retreat packet for next week. Uh, so we'd ask you to authorize the fifty-eight hundred dollars from the Town Administrator's Special Projects Fund.
Any, any questions? Is someone willing to make a motion?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to accept the proposal for the, uh, appraisal and authorize use of fifty-eight hundred dollars from the Town Administrator's Projects Fund.
Any, do you have a second?
I'll second that, Chase.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Kate?
Yes, Chase.
Yes, Mike.
And I vote yes. Okay. Next we have consideration and possible acceptance of a gift of fifty dollars to the Sturgis Fire Department from Robert and Lynn Barnes of forty-two Still Road. Any question, comment? Motion?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to accept the gift, uh, from, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Barnes with thanks and authorize the use thereof.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it, Chase.
Any discussion? Mary?
Mary, maybe you can just read the, the letter, um, to, to give kudos to the fire department? If you have it.
I do.
Okay.
I have a collecting paper. Dear Chief Gossom, we wish to send out thanks for all you and your staff do every day to keep us safe and protected, most especially during this continuing pandemic. We are grateful that you chose to live in a small community with cheering first responders. Please use your close gift card to provide a treat to your staff on our security box and one bomb. Okay, do you vote?
No.
Okay. Kate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Next we have COVID. COVID update, Jeff?
Um, continue with the protocols as we've been dealing with, uh, for several months, close to the public. I, you know, the vaccine begins to be distributed, um, slowly. Uh, first responders are beginning to get vaccinated. Harrington Hospital is our regional provider. Uh, I know Leslie Wong is working with the Health Department, or the Board of Health, to arrange for some enhanced vaccine opportunities for senior citizens when that phase of the deployment becomes available. I think that'll be a very positive thing for, for the community. But we wait for the vaccine to become available as we work through the, uh, Phase One, Phase Two um, program. So, that's kinda where we are.
Okay. Jeff, I just had a question, um, about that, because a few seniors have been asking me, and of course, I said that you have to wait until we're in Phase Two, beyond the first responders, but, um, can they put their name on any kind of list with Leslie at the senior center and get it administered through the senior center when it's their phase? Or are they gonna have to call their primary doctor? Or do you not even know at this point what the procedure's gonna be?
We, we don't know what the procedure's gonna be. Leslie's still working with the Board of Health on... You know, if we ran a vaccine clinic like we would run a flu clinic, how would that work and who would provide the, the vaccines at that point, right? So, we don't know how that's gonna work. Eventually, probably March, April, CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid, all these stores, you know, Walmart, will have it available like they have the flu vaccine. But right now, everything's focused on first responders, home care, health providers, nursing homes. So we don't know how someone would get on a list to go elsewhere besides the regional center. But once that information, because I've been getting those calls, too, how do I get on the list? How do I get on the list? We'd love to have a better answer than just you have to wait until that phase becomes available.
Okay, Mary, um, Leslie said she'll be sending out information in the newsletter in February. And, um, maybe registration will begin middle of February, toward the end, but like Jeff says, how and where into the day?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a waiting game.
Yep, it's a waiting game.
Right. Kate, Kate, any other business?
I have a poll, thank you.
Ike?
Uh, no, no business. I, uh, I missed the MPO meeting yesterday, uh, and I just wanted to briefly ask the town, town administrator if he had sat in on it. I was busy and I couldn't be, uh, be there, but, uh, they were, they were voting on, um, Route, the Route twenty, uh, uh, project. Uh, or not voting, but, uh, presenting the Route twenty project. How did that go?
Yes, the, uh, the, uh, MPO heard proposals from seven or eight, uh, projects that were requesting placement on the twenty-twenty-six, uh, transportation improvement... on the 2026 Transportation Improvement Program. Our Route 20 project was one of those seven. The presentation went well. DOT did it, made the presentation. They talked about hiring a consultant for the preliminary engineering. They used the graphics that the town had developed back in 2014 as the example of what the project would look like. No votes were taken. Right now, all those projects will be scored and sometime in March, there'll be a conclusion on which ones get involved in the tip. And as Mike knows, the Transportation Improvement Program is what's called financially constrained, where you can't program projects which exceed the amount of money available. So those seven or eight projects added together doubled, were double the amount of money they perceived they know to be available. So some will make it, some won't. We're hoping since DOT is the prime mover on this, it gets some attention, but we'll see.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else, Mike?
No, no. But thank you, Jeff. I appreciate you pulling up on that.
Mary, any other business?
No.
Okay, and I have none. Okay, next we have the classification and compensation study. Jeff?
Okay, here we go. If you ever wanted to disrupt an organization, do a classification and compensation study. So.
That's a good time.
Yes, it's, you know, it's got enough in it to make people, anyway, a lot of good things are in it, I think, and the Personnel Committee was very happy with the product. And as I said in the memo, there were three basic reasons why this was undertaken. The first was the Personnel Committee saw compression amongst the admins at the top level of the administrative rank and wanted to provide better separation and better demarcation about who was an admin number five, an admin number one, an admin number three, and all those things. So that was done. Also, there was concern from the Finance Committee that the salaried employees, rather than being on a merit-based pay increase plan, were on a grade and step plan similar to an hourly employee. I guess years ago, we had been on a merit-based and Leon moved everybody to, with, you know, everybody's approval, moved to a step and grade plan for all the salaried employees. The Finance Committee wanted us to relook at a merit-based program for the salaried employees. So that was part of the plan. Third, I think everybody's interest was, let's make sure that our employees are compensated in their cohort market, right? So there was 49 different positions studied. These were all non-union positions. The union positions were not included. So 49 union positions were evaluated, scored, classified, and their different salaries were evaluated based upon a set of criteria with regional towns similar to us. Not the normal 10 towns that you used before, but these towns were economically similar to us in the region. And they produced a product. And the product is what's before you this evening. As I said in the memo, there's some concern. And the concern, I think the biggest concern, at least from the salaried employees, is moving away from the grade and step plan. Historically, we were on a merit-based plan for the salaried employees and there was a struggle moving those employees through their salary range and they became stagnant at the bottom of the range. And when you hired somebody, you had to hire, you hired people in higher than what you were paying the person before. So that, I think, led to Mr. Galmond proposing what you have now is where everybody takes a step and you move through the range. So there's a concern particularly for the salaried employees who were hired under that step and grade plan to move back to a merit-based plan. Okay? So the merit-based plan is based upon a salary range. And then rather than merit being a lump sum check each year, the merit will actually be an increment on your base pay and move you through the salary range. It's a pretty common thing for salaried employees in a town or in a city, but there's concern here. And I'm going to pull up a spreadsheet and I want to talk a little bit about it and some other elements. There's a lot to this and I apologize if I jump around, but stop me and I'll answer all the questions. Hold on, I'm going to share my screen. So this, this is the pay, this is the salary ranges we're talking about. So in the current classification plan, we had 19 or 20 different grades and we've reduced that down to 11, okay? So the real concern from the grade and step plan on the salaried employees is grade eight and grade seven. These are kind of your middle managers. And that's where the big concern is moving back to a merit-based plan is a lot of these had an expectation of the step and grade plan. And I think at the conclusion of this evening, I think we need to look at that, those two classes or those two grades and see if there's a way to keep them on the step and grade plan and allow the nines, tens, and elevens to be in the merit-based plan. I think that's a good compromise to make this work. And please remember the town clerk's salary is set by town meeting, so it's not really applicable in this conversation. Moving down to the other grade below seven are the hourly employees, okay? And they stay on a step and grade plan. And I want you, I'll show you what a step and grade plan looks like. Okay, let me, the pay plan. So if you see, you know, each step is a year. Each step brings you closer or moves you up each time there's a salary increase. It's called a step movement. Currently, our step and grade plan has 10 steps and for the hourly employees, it's a 2% step. So the difference between last year's step and next year's step is 2%. To move the hourly employees through the range now, for the first six years of the range, it's 3%. For the second six years, it's 2.5%. So basically, the hourly employees are going to see more of an increase than what they did in the past. And that's to keep them in their market cohort. Okay? The salaried employees stay within their pay range, which is on the very far right column. And I apologize, this is a lot of information. It may be subject to another meeting. But for instance, for the police chief, you can see, for the police and fire chief, the range for those two positions is 96,499 to 135,000. So that's their range. If you hire a police chief in at $94,000 or $96,000, their merit increase would move them through the range. So instead of giving them a 2% merit check, you're going to give them a 3% merit increase or 2.5% merit increase, whatever that is, and that moves them through the range. And that's the same as everybody else. They move through the range by their merit. Okay. Let me stop there and answer any questions because there's a lot here. Anybody got any questions? Okay. So looking at this sheet, these dark boxes are the positions that are below the starting point of their range. For instance, the health agent who's currently making 74,757, the starting point of their range is 76,246. So upon adoption of this, we would move those employees to the first step or to the base of their range. So the health agent would move from 74,757 to 76,246 and they would now be in their pay range. And that's the same for all of these positions that are in these dark boxes. They're below their range, okay? So you have a couple hourly employees that need an adjustment and so forth and so on. There is money in the current year budget. When we adopted the budget, we included a reserve for salary adjustments based upon the plan. So moving these employees this year to their new pay plan doesn't impact the budget because the money's already there. And then we would start next year's budget building upon where we move them to. Even the hourly employees, we would have to adjust their pay to fit the step plan that is part of this document. So if you're supposed to be at step, if you're at 20, let me pick one, 1886, and on the step plan you're going to be part of, the nearest step is 1895, we would move you to 1895 and then you would be on your step plan, you know, for the foreseeable future. In addition to the concerns regarding grade sevens and eights, you know, there's always the concern, or there's a couple of concerns about where my, where some of these positions were graded. The library has a couple of concerns on a couple of their positions and we'll be reviewing those on how they were scored. There's a couple of other ones that we'll have to work through. But generally speaking, the new classification system worked. It achieved what we wanted it to achieve. I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm not saying everybody's happy. There is some very disgruntled employees in this system, either through where they're classified or they expected a different type of raise than what this plan provides for. And we'll just have to work through those as we go. And I think I'll stop there and have some discussion if there is any to be had.
Jeff, well, it looks like, because I don't think this issue came up with seven and eight when it was presented to the Personnel Board. But now we're going to have two separate ways, right?
Say, I'm sorry.
One of them is step. This issue on seven and eight groups, I don't think it came up with the Personnel Committee when we presented.
No, we have to go back committee.
Right. But listening, we're now going to have two separate ways of doing it. The upper group will be the merit and seven and eight will be step?
Yes, we would treat the, we would treat the seven and eights on a step and grade plan and the consultant can generate that plan for us to just keep them, because they're currently on a step and grade plan now. Rather than moving them to a merit-based plan, we can just upgrade their step plan for their current, for the new salary ranges. And they would just start on the steps. But that would also eliminate that merit component of the lump sum check, right? So their merit per se would be their step and they wouldn't be getting the merit check. So that's how they would move through the range.
Can I ask you one thing, Jeff? Do these intermediate management employees, do they get a performance evaluation anyhow?
Yes, every year.
I mean.
Every year.
Yeah. So, so what would be the difference if they get a percentage of whatever that block of money is, either 100% or 50%, whatever of that increase like you would do on a merit-based system? Why should they expect, you know, their full step each year, even though they're, you know, they're intermediate managers? I mean, upper managers usually get bonuses, you know, and intermediate managers get merit increases.
I, that's a great question and I understand exactly what you're saying. The issue I'm running into to be addressed somehow is that some of these were hired in a step and grade plan and that's one of the things that attracted them to the position. I certainly agree with you that in a municipal setting, salaried employees, it's very common to have a merit-based plan. Having adopted a grade and step plan for salaried employees is relatively unique. It's one of the first times I've seen that in a municipal setting. The concern is that since we were on a merit-based plan and we moved away from it because of wage stagnation on those salaried employees, that going back to a merit-based plan, we would then revisit the same wage stagnation issue, right? So in order to prevent that, as I said in the memo, these movements that are provided in the budget for these salaried employees need to be robust to move them through the range as they currently do on the grade and step plan, right? That's, there has to be movement or else they're going to fall behind in the marketplace and become less competitive as a salaried employee here than somewhere else, right? So that's really the challenge.
Yeah, that was going to be my concern. The whole reason we moved away from it was because they were falling, everybody was falling below market, you know, what was in the market and new hires were getting more money than our employees that have been here. So I understood why Leon did it and we all adopted it. So now to go back, the upper management won't, they want the rest of.
I'm sorry.
Coming stagnant. So the grades above the seven and eight, that would switch to the merit. We don't worry about their salaries becoming stagnant again too if they're not on a grade and if they're not on a step.
I am, I just thought the seven and eights being that middle management that really don't make policy, aren't directors, you know, I think that's a good compromise with, you know, the issue. Remember, the police chief and the fire chief both have contracts, so they can negotiate some of these things. And then you get into some of the heavy hitters like the DPW director, the library director, the finance director. All the, they have the same concerns and that's why making sure that whatever we do with a merit-based plan, there's robust merit to move them through the range. The reality of all this is there's no perfect answer because you've tried merit, now you've tried step, now you're going back to merit. I think there needs to be a conclusion that we stick with for several years to see how it goes one way or the other, right? Because it's causing this constant conversation in the organization and apprehension, right? And I don't think that's, it makes people uncomfortable. And to quote one of my Missouri friends, you mess with my money, you mess with my emotions, right? And we want to, we don't want to do that too often.
I know you mentioned this a few and you bolded it, very concerned and I know they're the middle. Are we talking about three or four? How many positions are we talking about without saying what they are? Three or four people who are particularly not happy with returning to merit?
A half dozen, half dozen, maybe.
Oh, that many?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
I mean, I guess I can appreciate.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just, I can appreciate when you're hired, one of the biggest things you look at in terms of conditions of employment is your salary and the way you will get raises. And for us, after only a couple of years, to revert back after we just implemented this change, I think as an employee, I wouldn't be terribly happy either. So I, I kind of like Jeff's approach of that hybrid where he's doing the best he can to address their concerns and also to switch back to a merit system. I feel the Finance Committee wanted to switch back for financial reasons.
I think they saw, and the unfortunate thing, and the unfortunate thing about the current step plan for the salaried employees, some years, the step is 4.9%. Some years, it's 3%. So they were seeing large increases with the COLA. If you, if you combine a COLA with some of these steps, some employees were seeing 6%. So they were seeing these rather large increases and there wasn't a lot of definition to it because the, it is what it is. It was, he took a salary range and divided it by 10, so some of these see more increases than others. And they were, and that's where the Finance Committee was. It looked like extreme raises for some of these people, whether they were or not, that's subjective. What we can put together. What we can put together now is a new step and grade plan, and maybe for this group of seven and eight, rather than 12 steps like the hourly employees, this one has to have 16, right? Because the range is a 40% range, right? And if you want to keep those steps similar to the hourly employees of a 3% for the first part and 2.5%, then you may have to extend out the number of years in that step plan. But that's kind of what happened there with the finance committee.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think, overall, the product is successful. I think we need to tweak it, and I'd like an opportunity to, to look at that, but I'd also like an op, I'd also see where the board is on adopting this, making the adjustments, even though some of the employees aren't happy with the level of adjustment they're going to see, but at least move them now, and if there's a need or another way to address it down the road, we can at least get them in their range, implement the step plan for the salary, for the hourly employees, and provide an opportunity to come back with the, um, seven and eight range, to see if we can do a step plan for them and kind of see if that works for everybody. Also, there's a series of title changes that were in the book. Those would be implemented as well, all those good things, so.
It wasn't going to be easy. I knew it wasn't going to be easy once we started doing this, but, I mean, it is what it is, and we've got to, we've got to work our way through it.
The good news is, if you look at that spreadsheet, not a lot of employees have to be adjusted. So overall, most of the employees were in their range. I think the message I've sent to the ones that had concerns to me is, even if you, even if you wanted to be in a higher grade, your current salary is still in that range for the higher grade, and you're still going to make the same amount of money you would have in the higher grade. So everybody's going to make more money in this plan than they did in the past. Perhaps not all the department heads or the, the managers, but at least all the hourly employees will. And then some of the managers, depending upon what happens with the merit and the COLAs, we'll see what happens there. It's going to be different, um, for, for people, yeah.
Well, Jeff, um, um, two of them in group seven, didn't they just get increased from hourly to salary?
Um, the economic development director and the rec commit, uh, the rec director was talking about going to salary, but we kept her on hourly for now, till this was concluded. So she's still hourly at this point. And whether or not she wants to go to salary based upon this outcome, that's a conversation we'll need to have with her and the rec commission.
Okay.
But we asked for years to put that on salary, and I think that's the ultimate goal, is to make sure, you know, we, we, we address that somehow.
Because, um, my last position has always been increasing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it used to be a part-time position, and then I went so many hours. Wasn't it just two years ago that we added five hours to it?
I don't know what you did two years ago, but in the last budget, I advocated for 35 hours a week.
Oh, those all run together.
Yeah.
Actually, Jeff, that, that question comes up a lot. What exactly is the work week consisto? How many hours?
It depends. Some employees are 40 hours, some are 37 and a half. What's that?
Well, DPW is 40, right?
DPW, police, fire, uh, are 40. The office staff and the administrative staff are 35, and we have two administrative staff that are 37 and a half. But full time, full time under the personnel rules is 35 hours.
I just wonder, rather than adopting this tonight and then having Jeff come back with a step for the inter, for us to consider for the, um, grade seven and eight, for the middle managers, do you think it might be useful just to do it all at once, so that, I mean, just a suggestion, I, because if there's a half dozen employees that aren't happy, um, and have legitimate concerns, I would just soon adopt it all at once on the same night, rather than suddenly going to go back and look at.
I agree with you, Mary. I personally would also like to see that total package where Jeff straightens out this seven and eight step and thing, so that we have the photo picture to a voting. And, you know, while his personnel being unhappy, he's always going to be a few people unhappy, because everybody works too hard and doesn't get enough money.
Yeah.
Right, Chase? But Mike and Chase, you should wait till we have the full package.
I, I agree. Uh, the, we should tie up our everything, especially as far as seven and eight.
Okay. That's good.
The time it's greater can work out.
We'll do that.
Um, got anything else on that? So I guess there's a little more work to do, Jeff.
No problem. I appreciate the input, and I appreciate the, uh, the feedback on where we're going and, uh, understanding, you know, what happens to an organization when, when these things take place, so thank you.
Okay, let's send a binder, correspondence.
Wait a minute, Mary. Can I just have, just one other, this isn't really new business, but, um, kind of old business. For our retreat, do you think, a few days before, you can send us again your goals for last year? Um, I was trying to find them, I know they're on my computer somewhere, so that we know which ones are continuing and which ones have been totally fulfilled.
You're going to.
Just getting all that together along with some other information.
Okay.
So by Monday, so by Monday, we hope to give you a binder with the goals, their status, some backup detail to each one, and then some of the other things you wanted to talk about, like the sewer bylaw, that'll be in there. You'll have the draft RFP for 8 Brookfield and some other information, but you're going to get, by Monday, we hope, to have everything.
Oh, fabulous. Even midweek is fine for me, but excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right?
There's a lot.
Okay. Correspondence? Yeah, I know. Mike?
Yeah, I, uh, I just, just briefly, and still before I read the correspondence on the new business, the Massachusetts Selectments Association meeting for, as part of the MMA conference was this evening, and that's why I was a little bit late getting into this meeting, because that one just got over. But the discussion was mostly about, uh, the, about social equity and, uh, and what municipalities can do about that, and what other municipalities are doing about that. And I'd like to discuss that a little bit at our, at our retreat, because it's, it would be something new for the town to, you know, consider, if, if it's something that we want to go ahead with, so. I just, that was a topic of discussion tonight at this Massachusetts Selectments Association. I think it's something we should think about anyhow.
Okay, Mike, you going to write something up on it, or?
Yeah, I'll try, I'll put together something for, for the retreat, uh, for it, but I just wanted to give you, uh, you know, an update on what, what was being discussed. And, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll try to get what, uh, what was discussed, uh, at the conference to you two as well, at, at the selectments meeting. Uh, the, uh, December 31st, uh, was our first piece of correspondents here, and that was State House News Weekly Roundup. It was an email from the State House News Service to Jeff Bridges. Just also on December 31st, we got a letter from Charter Communications, or three letters, from John, our mayor, updating changes. Uh, he's the Director of Government Affairs, uh, at Charter Communications. January 1st, we got the bulletin, which is a newsletter from, uh, the President of the Community Food Collaborative. And on January 4th, we got a, um, letter from Charlie Blanchard, Chairman of the Planning Board, to Jeff Bridges regarding the Sturbage Planning Board Public Hearing Application for the definitive subdivision plan for Fiscal East Realty Trust. On January 4th, we also got a notice of Phase Two Comprehensive Site Assessment and Phase Three Remedial Action Plan for the, uh, Kerboy Auto Salvage Place on, uh, was it River Road or, uh, and the, the letter from Benson, our Gould, Licensed Site Professional, Principal of CMG Environmental. Also on January 4th, we received, uh, a notice for, about, an email about the MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting and Trade Show, uh, which is what I was at, uh, online this afternoon. The, uh, January 4th, again, we received, uh, the, uh, notice from, uh, an email from Karen Colito, Lieutenant Governor, uh, regarding the Fiscal 21 Community Compact Grant Programs. January 3rd, uh, 7th, excuse me, we received, uh, the January issue of the Beacon, which is the newsletter from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. Also on January 7th, we received, uh, an email from Ron O'Connor, Department of Public Health, to Jan, to the Town Administrator, uh, from, the Baker's Colito Administration announced, uh, the extension of capacity and gather, gathering limits and guidance for hospitals, ICUs, staffing, elective surgeries. I presume that's in the guide to COVID-19. Uh, January 8th, we also received a, uh, a copy of an email from, uh, Statistics Alert to Cities and Towns, January, uh, 7th, 21 edition. Yeah, also on January 8th, we had, we had a notification of free crash approval for the town, an email from Jane Handy, Director of Accounts, from the Department of Revenue, to, uh, the Town Administrator. January 8th, uh, we received an email from Ryan Melville, the Deputy Executive Director of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, uh, and it's an advisory extending the period restricting, uh, retail licenses to 25% capacity limit for establishments serving alcohol. Uh, January 10th, 2021, we received a copy of the Weekly Roundup email, uh, that's from the State House News Service, uh, and the title was "Out with the Old and In with the Older." January 10th, also, we received, uh, an updated COVID-19 response, uh, an email from Melissa Olson, Olson, uh, Senator Markey's office. That was an email to, to the Town Administrator. January 10th, also, we received, uh, an email from KPR to the Town Administrator, uh, regarding announcement of temporary revisions to the, uh, COVID-19 safety measures. On January 10th, again, we received, uh, an email from Anthony Sernese, he's the community liaison from, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and, uh, it was a notice of the 19, uh, 2021, uh, District Local Technical Assistant, D L T A, availability. And also on January 10th, we received an email from Tom Chamberlain, to the Town Administrator. Uh, it's a report, a December 2020 Trails Report. Uh, January 13th, we received, uh, an email from Anthony Sernese, uh, he's the C M R P C, community liaison, and, uh, it was a local planning assistance, uh, mid-year update. And finally, on January 13th, uh, we received an email from Demi Screen, Program Coordinator and Executive Assistant, Commissioner's Office for the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and that was the Baker Colito Administration's announcement, uh, of a plan to begin vaccinations for congregate care facilities and updates, uh, to Phase Two of the, apparently the vaccination program. So that's the correspondence since our last meeting.
Okay, anyone else have any correspondence, Jeff?
I don't have any correspondence, but just maybe some feedback from you all. Is this too much? I mean, all the emails I forward you that I get on different information, do you, would you still like Alex to include that in your packet, or do we need to weed this out? What do we want to do here?
Well, I think we can read some of it, like, um, I assume everybody gets the MMA Monthly Bulletin.
Yeah.
It's in the mail, but it comes online now, so she won't have to bother copying that whole thing, you know? And so, Chad, I just. I'm waiting for the one that says they're reducing their prices. I'm, Mary?
I, I, the only thing I think we should add to the correspondence is the email that Jeff sent us from a resident of Cedar Street, um, expressing concern over various things for Cedar, um, the proposed senior center on that road. We got an email from some residents.
Right. No, we do get those, but that just came in today, which is kind of, like, tag it on and, you know, write it up at the list. But getting back to the emails we did get, that January 1st one, the dirt, that's the Community Food Collaborative, and they're actually having a contest to design a T-shirt for the garden, and, you know, you can win a free T-shirt, but it's to help promote the garden. And the contest ends February 1st. All the information, Jeff, can we put in our name, so people can read it?
Sure. Alex, do you have that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I've got it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Anybody, uh, public access?
Uh, let me find out.
Oh, we have minutes. Yeah, we have minutes, too.
Yeah.
Good evening. Is there anyone on the public forum line that would like to speak to the Board of Selectment? Good evening, is there anyone on the, on the public forum line that would like to speak to the Board of Selectment?
If I may, one thing, I mean.
There's, uh, no one on the line, but I did receive a second email that I'll forward to you from, uh, another resident of, of Karen Drive, so you'll get another one.
Okay.
And we'll add it to the, uh, correspondence for next time.
Okay, Mary, everybody's going to be upset with me, but I, I just, rereading the, um, reading it, I just have a follow-up of old business for Jeff, if I might ask.
Oh.
Kidding. It'll be very quick. Um, Jeff, I know you looked into certain members being vaccinated. Um, Jeff, I know you looked into certain members being vaccinated, and then you got back to me. So a certain member, he contacted me, he did get an email of some sort, saying that certain members were going to be vaccinated, but then no follow-up after that. And I was just curious, did the state change their view on first responders, or what?
Uh, this is what happened. Harrington ruled out their plan, and they were aggressive. So they vaccinated all the first responders that wanted it, and they had vaccine left over, so they kind of opened it up a little bit, and then they got told to shut it down.
Oh.
So that's what happened. Uh, there was, there was opportunities to get, you know, some people in, but the state said, stick to the program, and so Harrington narrowed the availability back to just who's in Phase 1A or B or whatever it is.
Okay, so now they're back to not getting vaccinated?
Uh, they're back to waiting for their slot in the, in the program.
Okay.
If they're, you know, and I think as, I think what's going to happen is, opportunities arise, those things will become available more frequently, right? When there's more vaccine, and particularly in a smaller region like us, there's only so many first responders, right? So you vaccinate who you can, and you're going to have vaccine left over, you may not be at the date of the next availability, but hopefully the state says, go ahead and start your next group, or if you have a cadre of people who are kind of on the borderline to the next group, go ahead and do those. So we're hoping some of those opportunities arise as more vaccine becomes available.
Okay, so Harrington was basically willing, because they had them, and the state said no, it's pretty much.
Uh, Harrington was willing to expand
Right.
who could get vaccinated, but they, I think regionally, they, everybody's agreed to stick with the program.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, minutes of January 4th, the collections, duration. Is there a motion to approve as amended? I mean
As written. This is Mike, and I, I found them perfect, so I would have to make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Any second? A second is it? To the function, Mary. And Chase, how do you vote?
I abstain. Yep.
That's right.
Yep.
So Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, yes, I do, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. So it's 0-1. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the
I'll make the motion?
Wait a minute, Alex has a
Oh, Alex?
Alex has a question.
Hi, sorry, yeah, I just have, um, one thing. Um, we were thinking of, um, for the retreat, doing, um, Stonewall Grill for, um, food for lunch, because they do delivery, um, so I'll be sending a menu over, if that's okay with everyone.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Yes.
Okay, I, I made a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Number of seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, second, Mike voted yes, Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Oh, and you, 30th.
On the 30th.
30th.